Gentlemen, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please stand for a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, this is a public meeting. The Bayonne Board of Education. It is 7:42 PM, the 18th day of December. We're convening in the Anna J. Herbert Meeting Room. The presiding officer is Joseph Broderick, President of the Bayonne Board of Education. Those in attendance include Dr. Michael A. Wonko, Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Kenneth Copaz, Assistant Superintendent for Personnel, Dr. Gary Maeda, Board Secretary, Dr. Dennis Degnan, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, and Mitchell Paskow, Esquire, our Board Counsel. The meeting is open to the public. I will take a roll call. Trustee Alonso.
President.
Trustee Cruden.
President.
Trustee Finerty.
Present.
Trustee Lawanda.
Here.
Trustee Munoz.
Here.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Bellato.
Here.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Here.
President Broderick.
President. For the record, adequate written advance notice of at least 48 hours giving the time, date, and location of this meeting with the agenda was provided as follows. Notice was prominently posted in City Hall at 630 Avenue C on the bulletin board reserved for such announcements of the Board of Education. The Board Secretary sent such notice to the Jersey Journal and the Bayonne Community News. Notice was filed with the Municipal Clerk of the City of Bayonne, Mr. Robert F. Sloan. Before we start tonight, I'd like to ask everybody for a moment of silence for three things I'd like to bring up. One was, we had a board member who passed away recently. He was actually started, he was on the board when I started working here. His name was Jack Frost. Terrific guy, real gentleman. Really liked him. Had a great name for this time of year. Also Neil Carroll, who's a kind of a legend here in Bayonne and actually in the country as far as political figures go. And the third one is somewhere probably nobody knows who may even know, actually the lady, she's originally from Jersey City, her name is Jacqueline Brown. And the reason I'm bringing that up only because is that I just heard it's such a tragedy. This poor lady, her husband was driving and got into a car accident, she lost her four children. Eight, six, four, and two were their ages. So this time of year, I mean, it's just tragic to me. So if we could just give them a moment of silence, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay, so this evening I'll start our items with our approval of minutes and acceptance of communications. Our communications and all our resolutions are on the bulletin board. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
And a second?
A second.
So on that motion and second for communication and minutes, trustee Alonso.
Aye.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Lawanda.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Bellato.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Next up on our consent agenda, we'll start with our curriculum resolutions. Resolutions A1 through A28. And I'll remind the public they aren't on our bulletin board. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
So I have a motion from trustee Cruden and a second from trustee Bellato. On that motion and second, trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Lawanda.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Bellato.
Yes.
Trustee Alonso.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Next up are our resolutions for finance, building, and grounds, Resolutions B1 through B10. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Motion from trustee Alonso and a second.
I'll second.
And a second from trustee Munoz. On that motion and second, trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Lawanda.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Bellato.
Yes.
Trustee Alonso.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Then there's our personnel resolutions. That'll be Resolutions C1 through C27. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Vice President Wilbeck and a second.
I second.
And a second by trustee Ryan on that motion and second. Trustee Lawanda.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Bellato.
Yes.
Trustee Alonso.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
And our final resolution is on the non-consent. Resolution D1, be it hereby resolved that the attached memorandum of agreement between the Board of Education of the City of Bayonne and the Bayonne Paraprofessional Association covering the period September 1st, 2018 through August 31st, 2020 be and the same are hereby approved. Be it further resolved that the Board President and Secretary are hereby authorized to execute the said agreement in the name and on behalf of this Board. Be it further resolved that the acting school business administrator of this Board of Education is hereby authorized to take necessary action to implement the terms of this agreement. The foregoing resolution is effective immediately. And there is a second page, which is the memorandum of agreement. It is on our back bulletin board. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll make that second with an honor.
Okay, so I have a motion by President Broderick and a second by Vice President Wilbeck. On that motion and second, trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Bellato.
Yes.
Trustee Alonso.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Lawanda.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Mr. President, that is all I have for this evening, but we do have some questions from our audience. And at this time, I'd like to introduce and ask him to start, our student representative to the Board, Mr. Arsh Banerjee from Bayonne High School.
Good evening, Board of Ed trustees, Superintendent Dr. Wonko, Assistant Superintendent Mr. Copaz, and Dr. Degnan. My name is Arsh Banerjee, and as the Board of Ed representative for the student government, I hope to inform you of the events the student council has participated in and plans to host for the month of December. On December 14th, a winter pep rally was hosted by the student government to celebrate the achievements of the winter sports teams. During the pep rally, we had the Bayonne steppers, cheerleaders, choir, and the band perform for the sports teams. During the pep rally, we had the Bayonne, we hope that the pep rally will provide the winter athletes with an exciting start to their sports seasons and allow students to show their support for our high schools athletes. Throughout the month, we also have two ongoing events, holiday grams and hot chocolate sales. With holiday grams, students have the ability to purchase a small holiday pin, which is delivered to other students with the message attached. This will help spread some holiday spirit during this festive season and allow students to get a small token of appreciation for each other. Student Council is also organizing hot chocolate sales during winter months to give students something enjoyable. All profits raised from the hot chocolate sales will be given to the Rotary Club. With the success of Fright Night in October, student council wanted to do something similar with a holiday-themed event during December. This month, we are hosting Winter Fest, where students will come to the Cheer Gym located at the ice rink and watch a winter-themed movie with their peers. We will also be selling snacks and hot chocolate there. Hopefully, Winter Fest will give students an event to relax and enjoy the holiday spirit. Also, as you may know, the student council has nominated Dylan Hedler to run as a candidate for the state student council. In a New Jersey Association of Student Council meeting, he was associated, he was slated to run as treasurer for the state board. Again, thank you for your continued support of the student government and your time today.
Next up is Mr. Anthony D'Amico, 73 West Sixth Street.
Hey, Anthony D'Amico, 73 West Sixth Street. I was just wondering on any update on the permanent superintendent search? I mean, when I ran last year, that was one thing I brought up. Everybody said it was in process. I haven't heard any updates and...
We did mention it actually at the workshop tonight. I can probably reiterate that, that I was personally, and I think many of the board members, we were hoping that we were going to try to have Dr. Wonko for a third year if possible. We'd have to get a special permission from the state. Unfortunately, that doesn't, doesn't look like that's going to happen, not because of him, but because of what happened was, they just discovered that about 40% of all the districts in the state of New Jersey have an interim superintendent right now. And whether it's financial reasons or whatever, they're not give granting anymore. So, you know, they want, as you know, the Governor Murphy changed the law that, you know, it's no longer, you know, they can, there's not a cap on the salary, so they're hoping that more superintendents would come in that way. But that being said, we have reached out to the New Jersey school boards, they gave us all, they're sending us all the information we need to provide a search. We intend to start that as soon as possible. According to them, we're in good stead right now. Interviews and applications probably wouldn't come in any earlier than March, so the bad news is that we're probably not going to have Dr. Wonko. The good news is that we're pretty much on track as far as searching for a new superintendent.
So, so like last year and the year before and whatnot, when Dr. Wonko came in and we said that the start, the search was starting, that didn't happen?
Well, as far as looking, looking for background information, we could do that, but we didn't see any need to go forward. There's really, to my knowledge, nobody would ever put in an application in this early for a position such as that. Like, if you were leaving another district, you're not going to apply a year before, so we, until we thought this is what we really need to do. But we did, we did ask for the information, we did receive the information, so at this point, we have to start to go forward with it. Once again, you know, we were very happy that we had Dr. Wonko here, and, you know, we still wanted him to be here, many of us, and, but unfortunately, right now, it looks like the state wouldn't allow that, so we will go forward with that.
And it's an open nationwide search, or are we just on in New Jersey?
No, it'd be, it'd be a nationwide search.
Yeah, that was some of the caveats, you know. Under that process, we could determine what parameters we want to set for our candidates. And that was one of the caveats that many of the board members insisted that it be a nationwide search.
And actually, with the new system we have in, this goes, it gives us a much wider variety of people that would apply.
See, there you go. See, it's already paying off that money right there that we just spent. It's already paying off a given dividend.
There we go. All right, thanks, Seth. Thank you. Next up is Jeanette Tring, 69 Boat Works Drive.
...hear about indoor percussion? The students' hopes and enthusiasm is now mostly squashed as they see Ms. Hichul upset as being questioned and they just want to keep the peace with Ms. Hichul and Mr. Craig as they have to deal with them, their superiors, and want to keep the peace and not suffer any wrath for not going along with what seems like unfair reasoning and poor timing to pull indoor percussion from the schedule. Is this not the same mentality that kept people silent leading up to the Me Too movement? The timing was not proper, like false advertising. To announce indoor percussion would not be taking place on November 1st, given there was a ready fundraising for the November 16th event. Not to mention the reason for Ms. Hichul not wanting for it to take place sounds skewed to me. Why hold back indoor percussion placed eight out of 16 at the WGI competition against high schools in the Northeast ranging from as far away as Delaware, Pennsylvania, Connecticut, and a few competitions, 10 out of 21 in 2017? Ms. Hichul states that indoor percussion is taking away from what should be elite. Indoor percussion was a fiery dedicated team member, so why not support that passion instead of squashing the passion to try to redirect it towards the programs she deems elite? A couple of the trustees have been attacked in the Jersey Journal over handling of Ms. Hichul and Mr. Craig. Mind you, they didn't bother to fill in the reader of any history leading up to the exchange. I'd like to thank you, the trustees, who spoke up, questioned your interests and not being bobbleheads. Dr. Wonko, you never got back to me as you said you would about the out-of-town indoor groups that Ms. Hichul mentioned, probably too expensive for my pocket. In light of fundraising and spiteful tone reasoning presented by Ms. Hichul to cut indoor, would it not, could you not see about using the funds that were used for fundraising to poll the kids and see if they still want indoor? Last year, Ms. Hichul was not happy about her horn players joining indoor. Is this the real reason indoor was cut? Has there been a resolution about indoor?
No, there hasn't been, thank you.
Dr. Wonko, is he going, are you going to be getting back to me? Did you speak to her?
I did speak to both people. I did, I always answer my emails, so you better check that they give to me.
Well, but at the last meeting, you said you would get back to me. At the November 1st meeting.
You just said you sent an email to me.
Excuse me?
You just said you sent an email, then you didn't get back to me.
No, at the last meeting, I mentioned that Ms. Hichul, at the November 1st meeting, has spoken about how she wouldn't mind, and she supported if her indoor percussion interested children, students wanted to go out of town to seek other indoor percussion groups, which would be private. So she said she supported, but she never gave in any information. She said this is November 1st, which is probably too late, frankly, to start researching, you know, preparing and auditioning, but that is what she said. And I brought this up at the last meeting, and you said that you would question her about that, and that you would be getting back to me, and I never did hear back from you.
I did answer, Dr. Maeda just gave me the emails that I sent you.
But you never, you never, you never got back to me about what...
She did send back to you in writing.
About indoor percussion groups out of town?
Yes. And we were supposed to have at the open workshop, the people from the percussion family told us they were going to give us a 10-minute highlight, and I received an email, I think, three days ago stating they were not coming.
I have the, my computer, if you'd like to see the...
That was supposed to be at the open workshop.
That was, this is the open workshop, is it not?
No, it was at 5:30.
All right, well, I did bring the laptop, if you're still interested in seeing it.
If you might, I'll be happy if you want to come in tomorrow or make a time to come in and show it to me. I'll be happy to look at it. I'll give the link to the rest of the trustees. If you want me to meet with Mrs. Hichul again, I'll do that as well. Still investigate if there's anything left out there for the students to go to, but I do have the emails right here.
I don't remember hearing from you, but I'll make sure I look up here. You never did get back to me, and frankly, her mentioning that was a little bit like off the cuff, because the reality was that November 1st is a little too late to start researching, preparing, and auditioning. So in a way, it was just kind of her trying to appease people who seemed unhappy with her unwillingness to, to run the program, that she was already fundraising for.
At this time, the three minutes is up. You're welcome to take that first packet off the bulletin board, and I think you'll see the documents that Superintendent Wonko is referring to. Our next speaker, Mr. Gene Woods.
Gene Woods, 128 West 39th Street, Bayonne, New Jersey. I just wanted to talk tonight about keeping you guys in a loop about this great opportunity, I think, that we could take advantage of at the high school level and the school-wide district. There's an initiative that started several years ago, coming out of Seattle, and I think it would tie great in with us working with the Amistad Bill and what was passed in 2002. I think we do a pretty good job following the mandate, since we have some courses up here and, and the work that we're doing. But I just started working with a group a few months ago called Black Lives Matter at School, and it's a national initiative in which they are trying to link, and they've been doing it for like three years now, where they're getting school districts across the nation to, during Black History Month, to designate one week, it's February 4th to the 8th, in which you would recognize Black Lives Matter at School Week. And there are some workshops that they started to do. There's one going to happen January 26th in Maplewood, in which they'll train teachers, offer PD, and give opportunities for people to bring that back. So I thought, you know, since I've been doing some work with them, and they were talking about, you know, extending the initiatives out to other school districts, I thought I would share that and see if anybody might be interested in taking a proposal on and maybe making it a resolution for the district.
Have you gone through the director, Mr. Ward?
Well, yeah, so I talked to Mr. Ward a little bit, but he said it would be better to open it out first, and that way we can go from there. So I didn't want to, you know, a lot of channels to go through, I just figured I would offer it up tonight. We spoke a little bit about it, but he said it would be a good idea if I proposed it out here and sending the emails.
Can I address that?
Yeah.
That's not the protocol.
Okay.
And I don't know what that means, open it out here. We have a set protocol that Mr. Ward is well aware of, and you're well aware of also. And it's not to go directly to a board member to ask for a resolution, it's to go to the director, the principal, and it goes through the channels.
Okay. I just thought I would propose it, put it out there. I mean, necessarily it wasn't directed towards the board members, it was more towards...
I believe a board member did get something from you directly.
Yeah, 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 but see, that's, I was just trying to figure out where to go with that. That's what I was trying to figure out.
You're familiar with the years, you know the protocol. You go to your director.
And I did go to my director.
And he told you to come to me and bring it out.
Yeah.
Then I'll speak to Mr. Ward tomorrow.
Our final speaker, Mr. D'Angelo.
Today I stopped by Assistant Superintendent Copaz's office and brought an issue up. And normally, I would wait for him to get back to me on that issue. However, something was posted after I left his office. It has to do with state recommendations in pre-K. Mr. Broderick, and I, I'm sure you have, well, I'm not sure, I don't know if you've seen these recommendations. My concern is that it says that they must be implemented immediately by the 14th to 15th. They're mandatory. Let me just read the first one for you. "All teachers' desks need to be removed from the classroom." No more desks. Pre-K. Now, there may be very good reasons for that, I, I'm at a loss. But the reason I'm bringing it up, I have all these teachers emailing me what's going on. Further, just a couple of things I want to point out, and you can look into it. As I said, normally I go through Mr. Copaz, he gets back to me as soon as possible, but then another email went out that it's mandatory and it's got to be done right away. Privacy cube. I don't know what that is, they don't teach pre-K, but I assume it's a timeout sort of place. Must be monitored by teacher or assistant. Assistant should be in place for the teacher to know who is in the privacy cube throughout the day. You have a teacher in the room, he's got to monitor the privacy cube and take care of all these pre-K kids. Somebody needs, I understand it's the state, but they don't know what they're doing most of the time, and they prove it by putting out a piece of paper like this. So what I would ask is, the superintendent is probably aware of this, but these teachers don't know what to do. They're going to be going on Christmas break, they're not supposed to have decorations up in their room that are store-made, they have to be handmade. They're not supposed to have anything in the classroom that doesn't, according to them, fit with what they believe should be. In other words, if there's going to be utensils, there have to be pots and pans from home. If there's going to be decorations, the pre-K got to make them, they got to, they got to put them up. There can't be any worksheets, there can't be any coloring sheets, tracing sheets, anything. Tell the teachers they got to implement this coming back on the 3rd, and that's in service. I don't know how it can possibly be done. So the only reason, it's an alert. The superintendent, Mr. Copaz knows, and I want the Board to know, at least take a look at this over the, over the break, because, and maybe get something out to the teachers to reassure them, they don't have to rebuild their classroom over the Christmas break.
All right, thank you. So, Copaz, maybe?
President Broderick, I did meet with Mr. D'Angelo today, and I told him I would get back to him tomorrow. I do have a sheet of requirements from the state. I did reach out to a couple of the districts already to find out what they are doing, you know, furniture-wise, best practice, and I'll be talking to all the principals, the assistant principals, to make sure that, you know, it is, you know, seamless transition and we can offer as many solutions to their issues that they bring up that we can...
And I apologize, you know I don't normally go over your head after I've spoken to you. If I did, it would be to Dr. Wonko. But the way this hit the, the emails for all the teachers and then get a follow-up that mandatory immediately, you can't possibly do it. You just can't order people to do something because the state says it.
I have a chance to talk to Mrs. Plaim or Mrs. Pacheco in the end room. That will be tomorrow.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. President, that is all I have.
Okay, before we leave tonight, there's a couple of people I'd like to acknowledge. One of them is our accountant, is going to be his last meeting with us, Matt Bowdy. Matt came to us during probably the worst financial time that we've had here, and he just did such a splendid job under very, very difficult situation. So I just want to thank him publicly, and maybe we should give him a nice little hand. Well, so at this moment, this is going to be the last meeting for two of our board members. Charles, Chuck Ryan, Chuck is in, you know what happens when you get on the board, but and, and everybody, I can say everyone up here is my friend. And sometimes you don't even know these people before it starts, but then you spend an awful lot of time with them and, and things change. And not that we always agree on things, but I think, you know, most of us always respect each other, which is terrific. In regards to Chuck, he's, I don't know if anyone that up here that was a hard worker, always prepared for every issue. He, you know, he came prepared, he did, he did everything he had to do. Sometimes he's very passionate about what he would do, but other than that, Chuck, would you say a few words?
Thank you, Mr. President. First off, I'd like to acknowledge my family. You cannot do this job and do it well unless your family's willing to give up your time. It's not just one meeting a month. There's committee meetings, mandatory training. I mean, I had took mandatory training to stay on the board my first year, incurred during a snowstorm, and my wife had to take care of everything. So thank you to my family, and thank you especially to my wife, Alana, because the learning curve for a first-year trustee is very high, and to have somebody who's been in the district for 30 years, who's an assistant principal, was a giant help, whether it was just the acronyms that come at you, the jargon, the terminology, the, the social structures, that made the job just enormously easier. So thank you to her, thank you to my whole family. Thank you to the board members. As President Broderick alluded to, I can be pretty passionate, and in the back, I can be even more so. But the thing is, is that I hope I was respectful, and they were always pushing me to be better. The challenges, the disagreements always made me rethink what I was doing and how to get to a certain point in a better way. So thank you to my board members, especially to those who were there during the financial crisis. That changed everything about this district. And the fact that we don't have a monitor is a tribute to Dr. Wonko, the staff that we have at Central Office, and the trustees for doing painful but necessary things that the state said we're going to get a monitor, but he still hasn't shown up. So that's probably the thing I'm most proud of, that I'm here. I worked very well with people who did a very difficult job in very difficult situations. So I'm very happy to have known, to come to know them and to work with them. And I'm also very happy and humbled by the voters. When 4,000 people trust you with their money and their children, if you're not humbled, then something's wrong with you. So thank you for those people for putting me in there. I still live in Bayonne. If you have a question about the Board, you have my phone number, you have my email, you see me on the street, reach out.
Reach out, we'll laugh, we'll yell, we'll scream, we'll have a good time.
Our other part of board member is Mike Malwandy. Mike's one of the smartest people I know. I would throw numbers at him, and it's like a little computer is in his head. What he brought to the board is... He gives a different side. Many of us here are educators, and we know people, we know children, we know... Mike came from more of a sort of a financial background, but it's a good side, because when we want to look at issues, we want to look at all the issues. And he made us come prepared, because sometimes I would say what he thought was ridiculous, and then I'd think about it and say, no, he's not that far off, or he's right. And other times, I thought he was far off and he was wrong, so... But he's great help and a good friend, and Mike?
All right. I actually wanted to thank everybody, too. So, I've been on the board for four and a half years, and...
It's half your life, right?
Yeah. And being on the board for this long, I kept looking at, what's the goal? What are we really doing this for? And it kept coming back, it's the students, it's the students, it's the students. And then we had problems, and all of us are actually problem solvers. We disagreed on some stuff, and we agreed on some stuff, but at the end, we had the goal, and it's the kids. We worked hard for the kids, and we're going to continue, and they continue to work hard for the kids. And honestly, I couldn't, we couldn't do it without each other. Everybody agreed and disagreed, but at the end, it was for the kids, teachers, parents, and also the city. And I wanted to thank everybody, and we came closer by disagreeing and agreeing. Thank you, guys.
On behalf of the board, I believe I want to wish everyone here a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, anything else that we might celebrate this time of the year. So, thank you, thank you for your support.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll motion.
The motion by trustee Cruden, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Velato. So, I have a motion and a second to adjourn trustee Alonso, trustee Cruden, trustee Finnerty, trustee Lawanda, trustee Munoz, trustee Ryan, trustee Velato, vice president Wilbeck, president Broderick. It is 8:14. Meetings adjourned, the board will not adjourn.